Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, February 6, 2024. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Rayrower.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. Why don't we adopt this evening's agenda?
Your honor.
Councilmember Novak.
I move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Novak and a second by Grisgoviac to adopt the agenda. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the agenda is adopted. And we are up to the minutes from the January 16th meeting, and it looks like everybody was here.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayrower.
I move to approve the minutes of January 16, 2024.
Second.
Motion by Rayrower and a second by Carlson. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and those minutes are approved. We have six items on our consent agenda this evening, and the first one is appointing Helen Cacone to the Arts Commission. Helen has submitted an application for the Arts Commission and attended the December 2023 and the January 2024 Arts Commission meetings, and after discussion with the applicant at the January 16th meeting, the Arts Commission recommends Ms. Cacone be appointed to the Arts Commission with a term expiring December 31, 2026. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 24-27, appointing Helen Cacone to the Arts Commission with a term expiring December 31, 2026. Item two on our consent agenda this evening is to approve a contract between the state of Minnesota and the city of Coon Rapids for the ICWC program. The ICWC crew generally works under the supervision of public works supervisory staff and completes a wide variety of projects for the city. They are a valuable asset to the community, providing thousands of hours of labor at a very reasonable cost. The city's current two-year contract expires March 31, 2025. So we are... Oh, okay. I was looking for like an ordinance number, but so we are going to approve maintenance services to supplement public works and golf personnel, and we are going to approve a one-year contract to expand the ICWC program. The next item on our consent agenda, which is item four, it's item three on the consent agenda, is to approve a PUD extension in Planning Case 23-4 for 3011 124th Avenue Northwest, Rachel Development. On March 7, the Rachel Development Incorporated was granted a planned use development approval from the city council for a new 40-unit assisted living and memory care facility, and we were looking to give them an extension. The applicant is requesting a one-year extension. The extension is needed due to current challenges in the market to start construction, including high material and labor costs, as well as high financing costs and interest rates. Rachel Development has closed on the acquisition of the land for metro storage and is invested in proceeding with the project. As soon as financing costs are feasible, the conditions of approval are all in process and would be addressed by staff before building permits would be approved, and the current plans have not changed from the initial planned unit development approval and are still consistent with current zoning and planned unit development standards. The applicant is anticipating construction to start in 2024. In Planning Case 23-4, we're looking to approve a one-year extension of the PUD approval to March 7, 2025. Item five this evening, which is the fourth on our consent agenda, is for informational purposes only. There has been a corporate officer change at Costco, and Roland Michael Vakris is the new CEO and president. This is for informational purposes only. And item six, which is the fifth item on our consent agenda, is to approve recommendation for reappointment, a reappointment of Charter Commission member Mastler. State statute require that a minimum of seven and no more than 15 persons serve on the Charter Commission, and currently the Charter Commission has eight members, and so we're looking to recommend an appointment to the Honorable Stony Hill just Chief Judge for the 10th Judicial District, who makes the final appointment. So we're looking to recommend to the Chief Judge for the 10th Judicial District that Stephanie Mastler, Mastler, sorry, be reappointed to serve another four-year term effective January 2024, with said term to expire in January of 2028. And then item seven this evening, which is our sixth and final item on our consent agenda, is to receive the 2023 year-end gambling expenditure report, and that is, that's actually the motion was, will be, the action will be to receive the gambling expenditure report for 2023.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Carlson. Is there discussion or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
I just had a question on the institutional community worker program that we're going to enter into. I think it's a great program. We've used it in the past. Just a question on expanding that to get that second crew. I know we've wanted to do that for a while. How does that work? Does this contract allow us to have that second crew when it's available? Or do we lock into a contract where that second crew is available to us now for the next two years and you can plan accordingly?
Councilmember Grisgoviac, counsel, that crew is currently available. We have been trying for several years. They just haven't expanded within their, for their program. So that, that crew is available. We've actually had their, the, the lead of that already coming to the city and kind of getting to know the lay of the land. It, they're ready to go as soon as this contract extends, and we're only looking for a one-year contract because in doing so, our other contract, our existing contract is for two years, and that expires next March. So instead of having them alternating years, we'll do this one for one year, so both contracts will come due at the same time next year.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayrower.
I just want to say thank you to Helen for joining the Arts Commission, and also thank you to Commissioner Member Mastler for seeking reappointment to the Charter Commission, and thank you to all of our commission members for your time and your service. We couldn't do the good work of the city without your support, so thank you.
Very true. Any other comment or question?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Armstrong.
For, for Mr. Hammer, on, on that, the same program, do we have any idea how many hours, man-hours we get out of that, or person-hours we get out of that every?
Yeah, Councilmember Armstrong, I don't have that in front of me, but we get a quarterly report, which lays out all the hours that have been worked and the types of, so it's a daily log of how many people came, what activities did they complete. I'm happy to share that with you for, you know, a year, for multiple years, however you'd like to see that. I can count up the man-hours if you'd like. I apologize, I just don't have that right now available to me.
No, that's okay. Yeah, if we could get a year's worth, that'd be interesting.
Sure.
Yes, Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Yeah, that is a, that is a great question. It's a great program. The crews love doing it. It's good for them. It's good for us. It's good for everybody. So I just, I think it's just a great program, but it is, it would be good to know just how many hours of worker being done.
They, they do enjoy it, and they are hard workers. Last year setting up for the Fourth of July carnival, all of a sudden I realized I was working in the midst of them setting up for the all-class reunion, and boom, we were done. Those guys were working, and then off, Public Works had them off to something else, and yeah, that's pretty amazing. All right. Well, we have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Do we have any further discussion or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Just one more. On Planning Commission 23 for the extension of Rachel Development, just for some reason, it's in my mind, have we already extended that one year already?
I don't think so.
No, that's the only, okay. So that's that section right next to the storage place across from Menards. Okay.
I'm not optimistic if they're waiting for interest rates to come down, or labor to come down, and material costs to come down, but we'll see how it goes.
Yeah, it seemed like it was a while ago where we were making the accommodations for and allowing that, so I thought it maybe was extended once. And can it, can it be extended again if it's extended this one time, or does it all have to come back before planning and council if that happens?
Just the ones.
Just the ones, okay. Thank you.
All right. If there is no further discussion, we have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that is adopted. We are up to item eight, which is to consider Resolution Number 24-8-9, awarding a contract for the 2024 well rehabilitation program. Mr. Hammer, you're going to keep us in that clean drinking water, aren't you?
That's right, Mr. Mayor, counsel. This is our annual program. We do it every year. This year we've identified Wells 102524, a west booster pump. Last year, we kicked out the east reclaim tank or backwash system because we were afraid to get over budget. So that's moved into this program this year. We're finding prices are increasing, as they always do on these things, along with lead times. So this is probably the largest contract we've awarded, or we're contemplating to award for this. It's nearly $900,000. Our budget is $600,000. Crunching the numbers, and again, I'll remind you that we assume everything is going to be broken on everything that we touch. So within this contract, we have a price to fix it. We also have a price to replace it. Obviously, we're not going to do both, but if you don't get that price upfront and you find something is wrong, then you have to negotiate it, and you're stuck with the price that you're stuck with. So we assume everything's going to go wrong. I've kind of backed out what I believe is going to be the case. That puts us probably around $650,000. We also have consultant costs that go with that. There, there's one aspect to this that, that's really more than just this year's program, and that's some electrical panel at our west water treatment plant. It was installed in the 1970s. We have one just like it in the east plant that was installed in the 1960s. So it, it's, it's a $200,000 item by itself, but it's not specific to that one booster. It would run all of the boosters. It, it's just a large piece that we're told we're not going to be able to get till the end of the year anyway, at best, if not early next year. So there's a couple of options to consider, and what I would recommend is we award the contract as we always do for, for everything. And then option number one would be, how long is it going to take to get that? When might we be completed, which is very likely going to be 2025? So we could then add that money to the budget for next year, leave it in this project, and move forward. The other option is, we remove that one item, we combine it with the electrical work at the east plant, do a separate scope, separate project, just for electrical improvements, budget for that to be done next year. Either way, we're going to have to issue a change order early on, and that's either going to be to extend the timeline to go into 2025, at which point I'd have to increase the budget, or we pull that out altogether, we keep it under our project budget for this year, we scope something larger for the electrical side, and we come back and put that in the budget for consideration for next year. I'm happy to hear what your thoughts are on that, because ultimately, I'm going to be bringing that to you in a work session or something different, saying, are you comfortable approving additional costs for next year's program? So I would recommend we award to Minnesota Mechanical for 899, 877. Then I can come back to you with the details and whether or not we kick that item out, or we just put it in for 2025 and pay those costs as they come due next year. So I know that's a lot. It's a little different than typical, but I wanted to lay it out there. We can even make the decision now. If you said remove it, we could pull that out of the contract and just reduce the scope. So I'll, I'll leave it up to some discussion, and I'm happy to answer questions.
It's not the Federal Pacific stab blocks, right? I mean, it's, sorry, that's, people in, in, the building trades know what those are. Yeah, they're not good. Is it showing any reason that we have to do it? It's just, it's just prudence, or it's something that is showing signs, we're concerned the breakers are getting weak, or whatever is in there?
Probably just fuses. You switch gears, go bad, Mr. Mayor, and we're to the point where when people come to work on it, they kind of look at it and go, I haven't seen one of these before. So it, it's likely, we just said, why don't we try to take care of that all at the same time? And not knowing what the cost was going to be, we wrapped it in as a scope. We did talk to the contractor about, you know, is there any angst with you if I removed this particular item? And he says, no, that wouldn't affect anything else. If you start delving into all kinds of different quantities, then yes, it might change my unit costs, but for that item and that item alone, I'm not concerned about it. Not to mention, we also have liquidated damages in this contract, so he's agreeing to be done by a date that he knows he's not going to be able to be done by, which is why the change order has to happen, regardless of what we do. It, it's, it's a tough one. I know that. Matt and I struggled over it a little bit, but you know, it's my recommendation, as we've always done on this, that we award for the worst-case scenario. We can either supplement the budget later, or I just develop a new scope solely for electrical work, and I come back and ask you for that dollar amount in 2025, in addition to the well rehab program, that we would be doing that next year anyway.
It's unlikely it will cost less in 2025. Kind of been our experience. Counsel, what are your wishes?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
So if we award this for 899, 877, engineer's estimate is 921, that, does that 899, 877 include the electrical work?
Yes.
Okay. All right, got it. Well, my, my preference would be to have a, a piece of work that large, a capital improvement that large be in our, in our budget, but if it's included in this bid, and if we can get the rest of the work done historically under budget, we could be coming in pretty close with this and have all the work done. So I would, I would think we would want to move forward with this and see what they think of the electrical work. I mean, if all the vacuum tubes are bad, I'm just kidding, we'd probably want to move forward the recommendation. That's my initial thought. I know we're just, I'm having kind of an open discussion here.
And I'll just add to that, that there's like a six to eight-month lead time on this. So we can't wait till we get done with everything to determine if that's the case, because if we do, we're going to be into October of next year before it's done. So we're going to have to really understand the timing of this early on, and within the next month, I would be back in front of you going, this is the timing to get it done. Would you be comfortable with me adding this in to the 2025 budget, which will go through the budget process? But at that point, they're already going to have that material ordered, and it's really just getting it installed as a 2025 cost and not a 2024 cost.
Your honor.
Councilmember Novak.
Mr. Hammer, did I understand you correctly in that we have two of these that are eventually going to need to be replaced? Is that correct?
Correct.
And we've already budgeted out for the second one, the west one?
No, Councilmember Novak, this, what we're proposing is to do the west one now as part of the well rehab. We would be looking at the east one next year, or maybe the following year. That one's even older than the one at the west plant.
Okay.
Which is why it is feasible that we just scope the two together as one and just do an electrical project at both plants. Doing it that way, though, then kind of has the, which plants are down at what times, and trying to balance that. This one allows us to do one one year and one the next. We could sequence it. Certainly, we can always make that work. It's just, it's not an easy one to juggle through, but I believe it gives us the flexibility now to budget for it and follow the process that we typically do. It's just one of those that you're going to know, it's already on order, and that bill is going to come due, and that's not one when you're looking at line items in the 2025 budget that you'd go, oh, we're going to take that one out, because it's already on the way, and we're going to be paying for it.
That's kind of where I was going with that, is you would have to actually stagger those two, and if we're paying for them that much in advance, I have to agree with Councilmember Grisgoviac then, because if it's that far in advance, if we can possibly bring this year under budget as well, I'd have to be in favor of that one.
So, Mr. Hammer, I think, I think we can find the money if, we're kind of looking to you for the expertise, should we change it? You know, Mr. Stemwettle?
Mayor, counsel, I was just going to mention, I think, you know, approving it as presented provides the most flexibility. Tim will come back and say, all right, I think we need to put on, repackage it later, or let's just do it. And if we do it, given the timeline, really, the project and the expense will happen in 25, at which point it's sort of like ordering a fire engine in advance, knowing that the budget hasn't been approved yet, but it's a two-year timeline, similar to this. We'd come back to you, say, is this okay? It's going to affect 2025, but once we say yes, we're locked in, it'll be a part of the budget. You know, we'll just have to factor it in as we're talking about rates for water, sewer, and all these other things that, you know, we're factoring these things in. But I think right now, this provides the most flexibility the way it's being presented, and then Tim will have to do some math and some quick work on what to bring back to here in the next few weeks.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Geisler.
To me, it makes the most sense to, to go with and recommend this contract with Minnesota Mechanical Solutions now, and then come back later, once more analysis is done, to say, are we going to, you know, put something in 25? Are we going to take it out of this and do an electrical one? But let's get this process started now. Let's get the other work being done now, and it gets the ball rolling, so we can get the best prices if we are going to, you know, get that on order. So with that, I would make a motion to adopt Resolution 24-8-9, awarding a contract to Minnesota Mechanical Solutions for $899,877 for the 2024 well rehabilitation project.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Novak. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Clarification on the engineer's estimate on this. In the packet, it says 921, but you mentioned around $600,000. So can you explain that?
Yes, Councilmember Grisgoviac, again, it's just assuming everything goes wrong. So within this bid, there is shop time to fix a pump versus buy a brand-new pump. So if we bought all brand-new pumps, that's a $65,000 cost. 65 times three, there's $180,000 right there. Or it's six hours of shop time on each one, and you're getting them done for, say, $15,000 instead of $180,000. So that's where that anticipated cost is different than the actual contract award.
So is the engineer's estimate minus the electrical work at the west water plant around 650? That could be the worst-case scenario, engineer's estimate. The reason I'm asking is it, it seems like even with the electrical work, we would most likely come in under 899. Is that a, an, a fair assessment?
Without a doubt, we will come in under 899. Yes, because the, the electrical cost is built into that 899, as are all the extras.
Okay. That, perfect. I'm comfortable approving, voting for this approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on this? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. To your fire truck example, that would be like Piper trying to go, should we get the 250-gallon tank or the 300-gallon tank? It's like, what? Just, just kind of felt like it was a little out of our wheelhouse. All right. Item nine is to consider adoption of ordinance 2296, rezoning office to general commercial 3161 Northdale Boulevard, Forest Realty LLC. This is the one we saw the presentation of before, correct? I know we've seen this anyway. Does anybody have any questions of this? Does anybody need anything from Mr. Brown or Mr. Crowley?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Councilmember Grisgoviac.
I just do have one question on this. I know we talked about this, and we workshopped, and it all makes sense, but I just noticed one thing in the packet today. And the reason I thought I was going to vote for this and probably will vote for it is that one point, it was commercial before it went industrial. Is that correct?
Yeah, so it was commercial, and then it was zoned office when Adina Realty moved into that space, and now they've since vacated that space.
I just noticed there was one little wording thing in here that I wanted to just make sure it's the same. We're going to rezoning to general commercial when in the past it was originally zoned commercial. So my question is, is general commercial and commercial the same zoning? Is it in our?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I was hoping they would say generally yes.
That was the only thing in all this whole pack, and there's a lot in here. That was really the only thing I wanted clarification on. So thank you. I'm good.
No problem.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayrower.
I also remember this workshop, and it was, it was clear that this area fits very well with general commercial. It was general commercial in the past. I just think it makes sense for us to approve this. So with that, for Planning Case 23-24, I move to adopt ordinance number 2296, amending the official zoning map of the city of Coon Rapids so as to provide changes in the zoning classification.
Second.
Motion by Rayrower and a second by Grisgoviac. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. We are on to new business, and we're going to consider Planning Case 24-2, consider Resolution 24-28, amending the land use from institutional to low-density residential 2831 113th Avenue Northwest. I don't know, Mr. Crowley, have we seen this at a council meeting? I know we've seen it at a workshop.
Um, yeah, that's correct. There was a, a work session back in April of last year on the site, but otherwise, we haven't brought it to, to you since then.
Okay, but it went to the planning commission.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
And mayor, before we get too far down the path.
Mr. Brody.
Staff's going to, mayor and council member, staff's going to recommend that we table this item and the following item this afternoon, as we're, as we're going through sort of our due diligence and getting this prepared for potential sale, depending on how things go. Our surveyor got back to us and noted some potential issues that we need to resolve. There's some, lack of better words, gaps and overlaps, and before we want to go any further, we want to, we need to fix that. That might take some time. So in some ways, their timing was good before we took any actions here. So we're just going to ask that you table it indefinitely. It's, we just kind of want to see what all the ramifications are. We haven't had much time to look at it since it came in late this afternoon. So we're just asking that you table this item and then consider tabling the second item indefinitely, and we'll bring them back when they're ready, or potentially, we may have to start over with the planning commission, but we're just not sure where we're at tonight. So we just ask that you table them.
And there should be fewer gaps than we had down in Riverdale, right?
Yes.
Dave just cringed.
We've already reached out to the attorney who helped us out down there, so hopefully it's an easier project than that. And it should be.
Councilmember Geisler.
In Planning Case 24-2, I would like to propose that we table this item for future consideration.
With the word indefinitely in there, or what do you want?
Indefinitely would probably be.
For indefinite.
Thank you.
Table it indefinitely.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Geisler and a second by Carlson. There's no discussion on tabling. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion is tabled indefinitely.
And then, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to also table indefinitely Planning Case 24-1, the introduction of an ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson. There's no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that item is, is tabled indefinitely. Onto item 12. Again, this is an introduction only. This is Planning Case 24-3, consider introduction of an ordinance, amending PUD standard, city code section 11-902. Mr. Crowley, anything you want to hit on this one, or Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I can, I don't have any slides or anything, but I can just kind of touch on some of the, the highlights. So this was brought to a work session in December with the council, as well as the planning commission. We kind of brought a number of, of items, so the PUD regulations, some residential housekeeping items, and then our discussions on parking minimums for multifamily. So kind of through, through those discussions, we decided to move forward with the PUD amendment that you see here tonight, and then we'll continue to kind of revise some of those other amendments and likely bring those forward this spring. So the proposed changes here are to our PUD regulations. They would remove standards related to detached single-family common interest community developments, or DISCs for short. So this was something that was added to the PUD standards in 2005, basically saying that any PUD in our LDR2, single-family district, had to be a detached townhome development that met very specific design standards. And so these standards have really been applied to a project in the city, and, and we feel they're pretty outdated. And so these changes are really kind of a reflection. We, we felt that the, the PUD tool was being kind of restricted, and the PUD tool is really meant to be a flexible tool to kind of allow different types of development that the city may want to consider in the future. So that's really kind of the core of the change, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, and when we workshop this, we were kind of doing some wholesale changes to chapter 11, and some of those have been set aside until we have more agreement on those kind of?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Council, any questions on this? All right, let me go back to the beginning. There we go. All right, well, if nobody has any questions, then we will, in planning case 24-3, we will consider an ordinance amending PUD standard City Code Section 11-902 introduced. Item 13 is to consider resolution 24-30, amending capital equipment fund budget for purchase of a scissors lift. This has got to be the only piece of used equipment we've bought since I've been here. I was really surprised.
Mr. Mayor, the original scissor lift from 2007 was also a used piece of equipment and we've got 16 years out of it. So we did get some quotes for new ones. We got a couple of quotes for used one. We found this to be the best value, not to mention they'll also give us $1,000 as trade-in on the old one, which will create some parts for somebody else who may own such a piece that isn't really supported anymore. So I'm comfortable making the recommendation for you to buy the used one. I think it's a good value and I think we'll get good use out of it for many years. So I'm happy to make the recommendation to you to purchase the new 2017, what was it, 10,775 roughly? Yeah, 10,775, of which I'll say we get $1,000 off that for a trade-in. So it's really going to come in at 9775. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
And like 216 hours on an hour meter on this, that's, that's low or do we know?
Yes.
Okay.
And we use it everywhere. I mean, that's, people have told me we need two of them really because we transport it up to bunker, we'll transport it to the ice arena, we'll transport it everywhere it needs to go. It gets some mileage just on a trailer going back and forth to buildings.
All right, very good. Councilmember Rayrower.
Thank you for finding one with the best value. I tend to myself purchase used equipment and used cars as much as possible. So with that, I will make a motion to adopt resolution number 24-30, amending the 2024 capital equipment fund budget.
Second.
Motion by Rayrower and a second by Geisler. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Kind of have the same comment that you. I've never seen us buy a piece of used equipment. So then, I was going to ask the question, how often does it get used? It doesn't sound like it got used a whole lot, but now, just the opposite, it sounds like it gets used a whole lot. I mean, I'd like to see something like this, you know, budgeted out in the regular process because it's capital equipment, but it's a pretty low-budget item, something that gets used a lot. We found a good value and, and so therefore, I will support this.
And I'll add that while it does get a lot of use, it's not daily repetitive use everywhere, but when you need it, you need it. And it gets, it gets the use. It moves around for us.
Can I ask one more question then on that?
Sure.
What was the, did we get a quote on getting it repaired one more time?
We brought it in and they looked at it three different ways. I think the quote talked about a few invoices that were due that have already been paid. So we spent close to $1,000 for them to go through it and go, here are all the things that are broken, but we don't have the parts to fix it.
Thanks, okay. Best to get out from under it, it sounds like. Okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. And item 14 is to consider appointment of election judges and approve salaries for presidential nominating primary. Ms. Lenzmeyer, anything?
Mayor and council, the presidential nominating primary is March 5 coming up and staff is asking council to appoint the election judges on the attached list, set election judge salaries, and approve the city clerk to make substitutions and appoint judges as deemed necessary. You may have seen our advertising, we were better off early on than we are right now so I could use a few election judges. Things happen, folks are, become unavailable. So if you're interested in serving as an election judge, get ahold of us, we'll get you trained and it'll be a great way for you to learn what the process is like. I'll note that we are proposing the election judge salary to be bumped from $11 to $12 to be more competitive with the surrounding cities. The assistant head and the head judge amounts were in line with other cities, so we're not recommending a change to that. With that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
All right.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Novak.
Ms. Lenzmeyer. Would it be possible for the city to put something up on social media saying, we need election judges? That way, it's easy for us to share that and get that word out further.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Novak, we are, and I can get you the link so that you can spread that far and wide.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
I've seen Facebook, I've seen Twitter or X, whichever we want to call it, out there.
But I also want to encourage people, you know, I spent 10, 12 years being an election judge before I joined council and it is enlightening, it's fun, it's a great way to serve your community. So please give us a call and sign up.
Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Griscoviac.
Question for Ms. Lenzmeyer. Presidential nomination primary, obviously partisan, do, not like city council, but does, do the election judges have to declare their party affiliation so there's a, you know, it's even? Is that how that works?
Ms. Mayor, councilmember Griscoviac, yes, there must be party balance in all of the locations. We've got to have at least two of the three major parties represented to make it a valid location. And then we can't have any more than half of one party in the location. If it's an odd number of judges, it's half plus one. So yes, there are some very strict standards and therein lies the situation I'm currently in because we've got to maintain party balance. So that's why we're short a few.
Okay.
We'll get there though.
I was kind of getting to that part. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Rayrower.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Lenzmeyer, and thank you for sharing that. And just want to offer my, my recommendation that our elections are secure, they are fair, our city staff do a fabulous job, and you can trust that they're ran appropriately and follow all of those very strict guidelines. And with that, I will make a motion to approve appointment of election judges as outlined on the attached list, authorize the city clerk to appoint and assign election judges during the 25 days preceding the election if substitutions are necessary, and approve hourly salary for election judges at $12 per hour, assistant head judges at $13 per hour, head judges at $15 per hour, and student trainees at $12 per hour.
Second.
Motion by Rayrower and a second by Geisler. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries.
Thank you, council.
Item 15 and 16 are related. On to item 15, consider adoption of resolution 24-29, approving the 2024 and 2025 police sergeants' labor agreement. Ms. Roth, anything you want to hit the highlights of?
Good evening, Mayor and council, thank you. As it pertains to resolution 2429, the council has requested to approve the terms of the negotiated contract for the period of 2024 to 2025 between the city of Coon Rapids and law enforcement labor services local 362 representing the police sergeants. A two-year agreement has been reached between the city and law enforcement labor services. The terms of the agreement include, well, police sergeant's pay is at 22% above the top patrol officer's pay rate and police officer's pay was increased by 3.5% COLA for 2024 and 2025, and then a market adjustment of 1.5% for 2024 and 1.75% for 2025. And the sergeant's contract, the sergeants will realize this as well as they're paid 22% above top patrol. The remaining details of the negotiated terms are in the memo that you received. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you now.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Do these agreements take into consideration the new legislation for like the paid sick and family leave time or is that separate?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Oh, do these agreements, these labor agreements, take into consideration the recent legislations at the state for the paid, sick, and family leave?
Yes. That is, so the paid, if you're talking about sick and safe leave?
Right.
Okay, so that is built into our employee handbook, so that's policy. So it's not represented in the contract, but they are covered because it's in our employee handbook.
Okay. Mr. Stammel.
Yeah, Mayor and council, our, the sick leave program we have for sick and safe leave purposes really covered the leave that was needed by this new state statute. The, the family leave and the personal leave that's coming online, I think it's next year, is a separate state program where they're, it's going to be run sort of like unemployment where you're going to have to apply through the state, you know, there's going to be a tax associated with that, that sort of thing. So that's just something that everybody will automatically qualify for, not something we had to build into the contract, but for sick and safe leave, we already had a system that covered what was necessitated by that statute. So we didn't have to change anything really other than policy to sort of explain, here's when you use this, here's when you use that. A lot of it's just accounting on the backside for us, nothing additional in terms of PTO or sick leave.
Okay, kind of over and above, okay.
Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 24-29, approving labor agreement between the city and the law enforcement, law enforcement labor services local 362 representing the police sergeants and the memorandum of understanding extending the health care savings plan.
Second.
We have a motion by Carlson and a second by Armstrong. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayrower.
I'd just like to thank all parties involved in our negotiations and coming to this labor agreement. It, it looks great and just want to thank you for the time and energy and work put into that, both this and the next one that will come up.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
Yeah, I think, you know, Ms. Roth, you know, thank you, and I think, you know, even, you know, Chief Steiner, when the parties have, I think, a good relationship and are working, and I think the city has, is doing what it can to make sure that our police force is adequately compensated and that our pay is, you know, keeping pace with our neighbor communities because we've got great officers and we want to retain them. So I commend working hard on these agreements to make sure that we've got fair pay for our officers.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Novak.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. Given the, our quest to get back to full staffing and the fact that we've had so many lateral transfers coming over from other cities, I think it shows that the contract negotiations that we had put in place in the past and where we're going to really appeal to the officers and you guys are just doing an amazing job. Thank you very much.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. Item 16 is to consider the adoption of resolution 24-31, approving the 24, 2024 police captain labor agreement. Ms. Roth, kind of same thing, just a little bit higher numbers?
Mm-hmm. So the council's asked to formally approve the terms of the contract for the period of 2420, 2024, 2025 through the negotiation process. The city of Coon Rapids and the law enforcement labor services 528, which represents the police captains bargaining unit, came to the following terms, of course, a two-year contract and wages amended as follows. The captain's pay band will be reduced from the current five-step pay system to a three-step system. A 3.5% COLA increase will be realized for 2024 and 2025, and a market adjustment of 1.5% for 2024 and 1.75% for 2025, similar to the sergeants and the police contract. And the remaining details are in the memo that you received. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rayrower.
I make a motion to adopt resolution 23-39, approving the labor agreement between the city and the law enforcement labor services local number 528, representing the police captains and the memorandum of understanding extending the health care savings plan.
Second.
Motion by Rayrower and a second by Armstrong. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion carries. We're up to the open mic portion of the meeting and I'm going to assume we have nobody here for open mic, since we have nobody here. Item 17, we do have a response from last meeting's open mic on the lawful gambling request. And we had two folks, gambling manager from Coon Rapids Hockey and, and so Ms. Sue Erickson and Ms. Amanda Jackson appeared before council, asked council to consider expanding the number of lawful gambling locations charitable organizations are allowed to operate in the city of Coon Rapids. And currently, the city's lawful gambling code allows for up to five lawful gambling premise permit locations with two of those locations being limited to pull tab dispensing devices only. In 2003, council enacted an ordinance limiting the number of lawful gambling permit locations to three for any one organization due to a concern that the number of available lawful gambling locations in the city at that time was limited, therefore making it difficult for some qualified organizations to find a location. For example, some organizations had multiple locations where others were left without a location. In 2013, the Coon Rapids Lions Club requested that the council increase the number of allowed locations to five with two being limited to pull tab dispensing devices only, and council agreed. And at that time, the council was very specific about only including the dispensing machines and not full-fledged gambling at the two additional sites. That change to code became effective February of 2014. Speakers are requesting the council consider expanding to allow more than three full-fledged lawful gambling locations as they believe it is limiting the revenues they can bring into the charitable organizations. And staff recommends the city council consider and discuss the city's lawful gambling code at an upcoming session. And that makes sense since we had changes in 2003 and 2013 and we skipped right over 23, so it seems like it's time. And that's just, yeah, for information on that. And they would have both received a letter from, a response from the city. And we are up to other business.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
Well, I'll take the calendar again. So Thursday of this week, February 8, our winter concert series, Floras, that's 7:00 PM at the Civic Center here. So if you want to come join a great concert, that will be 7:00 PM on Thursday, February 8. And then also this weekend at the Crick or Coon Rapids Ice Center from 4:30 to 7:30. It's family fun day. So they've got things outside, 4:30 to 5:30, outdoor skating. If it stays in the 50s, my hunch is there won't be much outdoor skating, but there could be some fun and games. And then there's indoor skating from 5:30 to 7:30. So, and there will be ice inside. And then...
The refrigerated wrinkle keep it frozen at 50 on it?
It works hard, but yes. It gets a little soft.
Yep. And then the, the last thing on the agenda before our next meeting, Monday, the 19th, this president's day, and our city offices will be closed. So please take that into account if you need to come to city offices for anything.
I just wanted to mention a couple of things. We are in the middle of, in the middle of the 60th anniversary of Coon Rapids Snowflake Days. We've had some great events. We've had a couple of events we've had to cancel because of the lack of snow or ice, but they're just doing a great job putting these, putting these events on. And Friday night, we have the comedy show, February 9, mature audiences, not family-friendly apparently. But as of yesterday, there were still tickets available. And then Saturday morning is the community waffle breakfast sponsored by the North Star Lions and Community Strength Foundation. All proceeds will be going to Community Strength Foundation, so I've been told I will be cooking waffles. That'll be down in the Coon Rapids Civic Center from 8 to 12. So, Mr. Councilmember Carlson, you are just sitting at the edge of your seat down there. What do you have?
How could you tell? I wanted to talk.
You have that look.
First of all, Mr. Mayor, I, I'll be brief because I know there's some celebrating going on at the high school right now. First of all, I want to congratulate the Coon Rapids cheer team. They won their first state championship and they are going off to Flor- down, going down to Florida. going down to Florida tomorrow for the Nationals. And I, I don't wanna look back, Mr. Mayor, but I wanna talk about some of these things we've had going on with Snowflake Days, and just what a success they've been. My goodness, I mean, so Snowflake Day's been going on for about a week and a half now. That's Sunday, January 28th, kicking off with that Guns and Hoses hockey game. 200 tickets sold, wonderful evening. What a great cooperation between the police department, the fire department, Community Strength Foundation, and the Minnesota Blue Oxes. Blue Ox, they're all excited for, for round two. And, you know, so police, you know, won the Guns and Hoses hockey game, and, and, Mr. Mayor, I've heard that there might be a Guns and Hoses softball game going on this summer, but I don't know. I hate to speculate on that, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I, so they got that trophy for winning, the police department got the trophy for winning that, the Guns and Hoses hockey game, six to three. And then immediately, two days later, at the chili feed, the fire department got the chili competition, won the trophy for the chili.
Want to offer congratulations to the fire department for, you know, getting back a little bit there.
All right. You probably were on your way to do that. I just, you know.
And the community parade was fantastic, 'cause we, you know, we even threw a lot of neighborhoods. There are a couple that, those, those corners were just packed with people, smiling kids, and just a, just a great event.
Rocky was there, I heard.
Yeah, Rocky was, yeah, actually Rocky was warm in that suit, I heard. Tell you what, boy, there's some insulation value on that suit. But that was, it was just, it was, it was hard to see at night, Mr. Mayor. I think I waved at a few fire hydrants and trees.
Thanks for stepping up and filling that uniform, sir.
It was, it was a lot of fun. And then the senior snowflake party, absolutely packed, 100% packed. Great event for the seniors. And Winter Fun at Sand Creek, all these kids just doing a great time, showing their talents with the cookies and the canvas and cookies event. And last thing I wanna touch on, Mr. Mayor, was the Riverdale Snowflake Village. Boy, that was fantastic. Estimates, 200, 2,000? And when you hear 2,000, you're thinking, oh, sure. No, actually, they, they were giving out hot chocolate, and they gave about over 2,000 hot chocolate cups, so 2,000's a decent number. That place was packed. It was just a, a fantastic event, and, and so the bulk of the Snowflake Days is over, but boy, it's been a rousing success, and look forward to the next week of activities. That's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
Lots of, lots of appreciation to that Snowflakes Committee for all the work on that.
Mr. Mayor?
All right, Councilmember Novak?
Not to look back at all, to look a little bit forward, and looking forward a lot sooner than we usually do. This is just a reminder, Bunker Hills Golf Course has opened. It is February 6th, and we have people golfing at the golf course. So if you guys wanna go out and get your game in shape for the summer, now's a good time.
I spent last week, I think it was Wednesday morning, with Tim Anderson, Director of Golf, and he was giddy. He was giddy. They, they were booked out for the day, and he was so excited, so. All right, any other business to come before council? Mr. Stamwold, anything?
You covered it, Mayor and Council, thank you.
All right.
Ms. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Carlson, a second by Geisler to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.